There are no two days which are similar. There are no two persons who are similar. Every one of us are very precious. Hallelujah! I thank God for the four children of God, we're going to take baptism tomorrow morning. God bless them abundantly. If there is somebody who has not taken baptism in their life and doubting whether or what to do, I hope by the end of the message that God will convince you. And be ready, because we don't have much time. If Jesus is coming soon, you need to be there. I hope you will also agree for tomorrow morning service and you'll be there tomorrow. Hallelujah! If you are excited, let's read the salad first and we'll go to the main message. There are so many things that God wants to speak to you. So we'll start with Romans chapter 4 verse 17. Romans chapters 4 verse 17. We will quickly read, somebody who has taken the verse can read it for me and then we will move forward.
I have made thee a father of many nations; before him whom he believed, he was God who quickened the dead and called those things which they not as though they were.
A God who calls things that though they are nots as though they were. We serve a God who is able to call things from nothing. His word is so powerful that He is able to create things from nothing. Tonight, your nothingness will fly away. If you say you are something, then God can do anything in your life. But if you are nothing, if you are broken, and if you are really looking for the power of the Holy Spirit to work in you, He is going to work in your life. Because our God is a God who creates everything from nothing. From the beginning, God created everything from nothing. You just need to allow the Spirit of God to hover over you, work over you, remain over you, you will find your nothingness flying away. Your weakness being removed, your struggles being taken away. Because He is able to quicken the dead and bring back to life. The dead areas, the degenerating areas, the decomposing sites of your life, tonight is going to become light. And it's going to smell fresh. And there's going to be the breath of good air. And the Spirit of God that is going to pour in your life. I've taken the microphone so that I can clout my hands. Hallelujah, I wish you would also clap with your hands. Hallelujah! You can lift your hands, you can clap your hands, because our God deserves all the worship. And I can tell you, when I clap my hands here, the devil is scared of this midtown. Hallelujah! He understands the clap of a saint of God. I don't know whether you know the power of your clap. Hallelujah! This is the time of worship. All that is binding you will be released. And you must have the freedom. Whatever that is binding your life, be released in the name of Jesus. All of you are here with expectations. You have some problems, your burdens, your worries. Whatever that be, God is able to take us away, take that away. I want to take you to a second portion from here. I'm not going to go deep into this message, but I'm going to take you to another portion. That is 2 Corinthians chapter 1 verse 20. 2 Corinthians chapter 1 verse 20.
All the promises of God in him are yes and amen.
All the promises of God in him are yes and amen. God never says no. Isn't that interesting? When you say, "I'm claiming his promise", not anything and everything, claiming his promise, he doesn't say no. Whatever word he has said, the word that is here cannot be changed. Somebody asked me, "Can you obey everything that is written?" I said, "God has not written anything which you cannot obey." Somebody asked me, "Do you really need to obey?" I said, "Yes, you have to, there's no other go." Because this is the word of God. I was preaching in Coteau and I got into after the dinner, I was going to go. A very wealthy, rich man came to me. He knocked at the glass and I put it down and he asked me, "Dr. Kohur, you are preaching tonight and you said you need to be baptized. Isn't really essential that you need to be baptized?" I said, "I am not saying, as Jesus said, believe and be baptized so that you will be born again, that you will be saved, that you will have the kingdom of God. If you want to go to heaven, there is no second way. You need to obey the word of God. There's no shortcut." Hallelujah! Hallelujah! In his word, everything is yes and amen. I am going to take you to the next level in that verse. Shall we continue in that verse one more, little ahead? Yes, the next one.
Establish us with you in Christ, anointed us, is God, who had also sealed us and given the earnest of the Spirit in our hearts.
He has given us promises and all of them are yes and amen. Jesus' name in Revelation is amen, amen. So when you have Jesus in you, you become what? You become the amen of heaven. So that when you pray and say amen, it becomes amen there. I hope you got the mystery of the kingdom of God. When you have Jesus in your heart, the amen of heaven, and when you pray and say amen to it, there is amen in heaven. What a great mystery! The mystery that God, the hope of glory, Jesus, the hope of glory, is in us. This is what was hidden for years together. This is what the angels were waiting to see. And it is happening now, before the second coming of Christ. He is preparing the church. Why are we here the second day? I'm so happy, it's because Pastor Thomas Matthew called me. I'm thankful to Pastor and the friendship and relationship we have. Just like he said, I don't want to take all the introduction to introducing. And also, I'm so excited because now I know you better than yesterday. I know it's all become familiar faces. Because I know most of your names and I'm very happy yesterday. But one step ahead! Our relationship is not going to end here. We are going to live in eternity. Isn't that interesting? Hallelujah! We are not here by accident, God has brought us together. What is the purpose of these three days of meeting? It is because God wants to change us to the divine nature. As it is written in Peter, that you and I are called to have the divine nature. But sometimes we may not have the divine nature, our earthly nature will jump up. But God wants to transform our life and make us to have the divine nature. So that we become part-takers of the kingdom of heaven. So these meetings, these prayers, our church is meant to make each one of us as saints and children of God. Hallelujah! Some people believe that they can make, few people are saints in the church and the rest of the people continue as devils. Is that true? Few people fill with the Holy Spirit, the other people not fill with the Holy Spirit. Is that true? No, if you have any doubt, you can take 1 Corinthians chapter 1, 1, 2, 3, verse 1, 2, 3. You can say 2 Corinthians chapter 1, verse 1, 2, 3. And then I am going to come to my message today after this, the introduction, the salad is getting over. You will find who are the saints. Yeah, let's just quickly read. 1 Corinthians chapter 1, verse 1, 2, 3, and 2 Corinthians chapter 1, verse 1, 2, 3. Yes. Quick read. Called to be an apostle of Jesus Christ. Yes. Our brother. Yes. Those sanctified in Christ Jesus. Called to be saints! Everybody in Corinth church was what? Called to be saints. We know about Corinth church, they were not really saints. We know what was all happening, I don't want to explain, that's not my class. But what are they? They are called to be saints. And with all and everyone who are called in the name of Jesus all over the world. So this church in Atlantia, Georgia, has everyone sitting here as saints of God. Hallelujah! So this whole program is to change us into the divine nature. To make us saints, the bride of Christ. 2 Corinthians chapter 1, verse 1, 2, 3. 2 Corinthians chapter 1, verse 1, 2, 3. What do we see? Yes.
Paul and apostle of Jesus Christ by the will of God, and Timothy our brother, unto the church of God which is at current, with all the saints which are in all Achaea.
Yes, saints in Achaea! Saints in Atlantia! Saints in Trishul! Saints in Kerala! Saints in America! You can't have few people make, some churches have that, I'm sure we don't have that system. Where they make two, three saints and all others are continuing as devils, no. We have all are called to be saints. We are the inheritance of promises of God. We have Jesus who is yes and amen with us. We are not ordinary people. You and I are the powerhouse of the kingdom of God! I don't know what you know about yourself, you are not ordinary. Because you have Jesus in you. If there is somebody who doesn't have Christ in you, receive him tonight. Because God wants to touch your life. What a great opportunity! I accepted Christ when I was just five years old. In my mother's prayer mat. I knew my mother was having a special relationship with a supernatural God. I knew that was real. At the age of five, I could realize the intensity of the relationship she was having. And I said, "Mom, I want mother, I want to have this Jesus." She told me, John chapter 1, verse 12. And she said, "If you accept him in your heart, you become a child of God." Hallelujah! And I accepted Christ at that age. And I know the day when the Spirit of God fell in my body. I was six or seven years, less than eight years old. I know the day when I took my baptism. I know the day when I was only 10 years old, when I took this Bible and went out to the market, Sotirumela, preaching the word of God. People will come around to see the boys, two, three of them, singing some songs and the Bible and they look. We never went to Bible college, we didn't look for anything else. We didn't ask permission from anyone. Any free time we get, we go and preach the word of God. I started then, I have not stopped yet. Even the last breath of my life, I want to praise the Lord God! Because He is worthy for all our praises! The heaven is full of its glory. The earth is full with its praises. We want Atlantia and America, every part where we are working, to have the fragrance of heaven spread through our life. Hallelujah! So you are here for a very special program. That is the saints-making procedure. You and I are going to be made into the image of God. Get ready to be transformed into the image of God. So shall we turn to tonight's message quickly? It's a big message, so we need to rush through it. I'm sure some of you have already went into YouTube yesterday. I had reports today morning about the testimony. You will hear more testimonies today. And let's go quickly into Genesis chapter 25, verse 15 to 18. We will quickly go into the next few verses. Genesis chapter 26, verse 15 to 18. Genesis 26, 15 to 18. Yes. I've taken a little difficult message in the evening, second day.
Father servant had digged in the days of Abraham.
Slowly, come again. All the wells is father servant digged in the days of Abraham, yes, his father. Fill them with earth. Enemy has a habit of filling your wells with dirt. Mud-slinging it is called. It didn't start today. It didn't start on the TV or newspaper. It's a devil's program. So if you find anybody in the church throwing mud, understand he has the spirit in him. Not this spirit, but the other spirits. Peristyle spirit, the devil's spirit. We have no mud-slingers in the kingdom of God. We never speak evil about other person. It's a devil's program. It is a Philistine program. Mud-slinging the brothers and sisters. That is not my message, but if you still have doubt, you can say 1 Peter 3:9 and then we'll quickly come back. About that particular mud-slinging, 1 Peter chapter 3:9. Quickly read and then we'll come back. Yes, 1 Peter chapter 3, verse 9. Not rendering evil for evil. Yes, anybody has got it? Don't pray evil for evil. Insult with insults. So do we do this? Evil for evil, insult for insult, inside the church? Inside the community? Inside the family? Back home, I used to say, "Go already." Somebody says something to me, I'll say something more. If he says one more, then penage cake. Make sure that the other fellow is down. Insulting. Not blessing, cursing, fighting. This is the job of Philistines. They throw the mud into the well. What are we called for? What is the next thing? What are we called for? But blessing? You are called. So that you may inherit? A blessing! So what are we supposed to do? Say, "God bless you!" All the time, if somebody curses you, you say, "God bless you." If somebody shouts at you, say, "God bless you." When I go back from Atlantia, I'll go back with lot of blessings. Because I keep saying, "God bless you, God bless you, God bless you." Hallelujah, you want more blessing? Bless ten people in your life! Stop cursing, stop criticizing, stop ridiculing! Because this is a Philistine's job, not your job! As a child of God, as a man of God, as a person of God, you and I are called to be a blessing. Every time and every time, anytime, we have blessing pouring in our life. So let's come back to Genesis after 26, verse 15. What did the Philistines do? They came and kept throwing mud into the source which Abraham had. Abraham had a habit of digging wells. My question tonight is, do you have the habit of digging wells? Digging deep into yourself where the fountains of joy can come in. Digging deep in yourself where the fountains of peace can flow in. You are looking to other people for joy? You looking to other person for knowledge? But God is there to give you anointing. From within your belly, it's going to start flowing. All you need to do is take the dirt out. Hallelujah! Back home in Kerala, we have lots of wells. And every year, we have something called Kenardega, cleaning the well. You don't, you don't, I have not seen this. If you don't do that, you don't get good water. You need to clean the well. So tonight, what are we going to do? Clean our sources. Clean our wells. Most of you sitting here, listening to the word of God, are born again. If there is anyone who is not born again and does not have a well, make sure you dig one today. But if you already had couple of wells in your life, today you're going to clean all the wells. And take out all the dirt that the devil has poured in you. Now let me come to the seriousness of the message. When an enemy attacks a city, what does he do? It cuts off the electricity first and stops the water supply. Anybody working in the water supply department? They will know the importance of water supply. When I came here, Steve and I were talking and he was telling me about the importance of water and water supply. The enemy cuts off the two sources, one is the electricity. The second one is? Water supply. Disobedience made Gideon lose his electricity. And there was no power in him when the enemy came. He thought, "I can do the same ministry before." He got up and started shaking, but nothing happened. Only shaking was there. The connection has been lost. You and I need to have a continuous 24/7 relationship with the Holy Spirit. That your current is flowing through your body every day. Crystal life is a daily walk with God. Your source is in heaven. You are listening to Him every time in your life. Taking decisions by the will of God. Guided by the voice of God. Walking according to the principles of the kingdom of God. Walking for the purposes of the kingdom of God. And always relating with Him. So the enemy knew the best way to destroy Israelites was to put mud in their wells. You think it's a new business? No, he started long time back. You want to be happy, but he puts problem inside. Your happy source of happiness become very sad. In the morning, you got up excited, saying, "I'm going to be happy today, from today onwards, I'll never be upset." Suddenly, a big problem. Everything gone. Finished! Your happiness is stolen. Your peace is taken away. When we are studying, I see a lot of children here. You feel that every day is exam, fed up with studies, fed up with books. I used to be excited about exam. My wife told, "You are the only crazy person I've seen excited, I'm always about exam." Because exam is a time when you can prove yourself, you studied so hard, there is no exam, how will you show them that you know stuff? And you never study the day before the exam, you study much earlier. Praise the Lord! Hallelujah! There are a lot of children here, I told them yesterday, I'm going to speak something for you special today. You're all going to be blessed. See, I told in my testimony, anybody who has not heard my testimony, what yesterday's part, that's a word of 8:18, that's what I shared yesterday. Anybody who has not heard my testimony, who's here for the first time? There are people, okay, so. There are few, okay. Now, you need to get back to the, I can give you a choice, that's quickly YouTube and receive the rest of it. But I'll tell you in one word, that I was born as a hydrocephalic baby. Distressed to die, mentally, physically retarded, good for nothing. The medical science, neurosurgery I practiced had told me that I will not live. Even if you make me live, I would be physically, mentally retarded. But Jesus healed me. And made me a neurosurgeon. What I am is a gift of God. My health is a gift of God, my wealth is a gift of God, my family is a gift of God, my education is a gift of God. Every moment I live is a gift of God! There is nothing that I own which is my own, it is this! Hallelujah! So my mother told me, I am dyslexic, so very difficult to write, spelling mistakes, all problem, I don't know how I will tell you yourself. So when I'm studying, I had a lot of difficulties. But my mother told me, James chapter 1, verse 5 says, "If you lack wisdom, ask him. The same God who gave Solomon the wisdom will give you the wisdom." So I kept praying, "Lord, you know I'm a hydrocephalic baby, heal." I need your wisdom, I want to get first rank in my class. Every time, what happens? The previous day of my exam, whatever I study will come the next day. Very easy, no? First year medical, physiology, I studied Talamas. The next day was a Thalamic, because I had major question. I still remember. Final exam. Anything that I study, I used to testify everywhere. So my hostel, in my room, before the exam, there is big crowd to see what is he studying. Because they all know whatever I study will come. It happened for my 10 standard, it happened for my 8 standard, it happened for my MBPS, it happened for my MS, it happened for my MCs. It still happens, if the patient walks in, God tells me the diagnosis. Isn't that wonderful? I can tell you plenty of stories. I was sitting, one man came, eight years Parkinson's disease. He was coming from Parani, walking like this. Seen by all neurologists, big file. God told me, "Miss diagnosis, it is water in the brain." I asked Matthew, "Niet, have you got CT done?" "No, Parkinson's disease is a clinical diagnosis, you never do a CT." I said, "Please, go and get a CT scan, because I think you have water in the brain." So immediately, I send him, who did a CT scan and found that he had normal pressure hydrocephalus. I took him for surgery the next day. He started walking. Eight years bedridden man walking, whole of Parani is coming to my hospital. They think anybody and everybody will walk. This was a planned program of God. God revealed the diagnosis as he walked into my OPD. I'm talking about a God who can help you in your studies, helping you in your driving, helping you in your cooking. It is not a God who helps you only on a Sunday, it's a 24/7 business! It is a relationship with your heavenly Father. And Niet is Jacob, I took, he had a big mustache like this and, Parani, Jacoba Church, I told him, "You have to be born again." Because I operated in his island, he listened. I said, "You should take baptism." He said, "Priest will come and go, but I will not go." I have the book, I am the Kai Karin, the main man. His wife is Silon Pentecostal, she's standing there, praise the Lord, hallelujah, behind. And I'm trying to tell him that you need to be born again and take baptism. He said, "No, no, 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 no." I go off, I said, "You need to be born again, otherwise you will not enter the heaven." Three days later, I come and he's screen shaved and he's saying, "I'm born again." I said, "What happened?" He said, "I saw angels last night in the room." I said, "They are my duty daughters, how did you see my duty doctors?" I have angels with me, even right now, two of them, you can't see them. They have been with me from my childhood. If you see them, then you won't listen to the next message. That is why they are invisible. They never take leave, they are always with me wherever I travel. I knew it from right from my childhood. Hallelujah! You all have one next to you because you are the child of God! You have the servants of the kingdom of God protecting you, taking care of you. Why are you so afraid? Why are you going back? Hallelujah! Every time when I study, it comes. For my MS exam, I was married with one child and the final day, my wife said, "Why don't you go to sleep?" I said, "It's 2 o'clock, let me study a little more, in case something else." She said, "No, no, today, 2 in the morning enough, you go to sleep. You've been studying 18, 20 hours, that's enough." I went to sleep. 4 o'clock, I jump up and I take the plastic surgery book and I look at, C.A. mandible, cancer of this jaw, close it and keep it, next day morning I go. I have three short case, one long case, the first short case is C.A. mandible. Imagine? There was no enough case, not enough case in the surgery department. So one resident went to plastic surgery at night to bring a C.A. mandible patient. And heavenly Father saw the son was sleeping without any knowledge about the mandible. Says, "Berta, get up, you get up, my son, read that mandible." And I studied the mandible and went, examination is not, the examiner is examination, not my exam, their exam. Because I knew everything, I read only last night. My God is a great God! He is alive, he's a miracle watching God! The devil is trying to destroy your joy! He's trying to destroy your peace! God wants to clean your fountains tonight. Let the joy come, the true joy. Which only the Holy Spirit can give. Hallelujah! Hallelujah! Why is this message very important? Because my God is a God of generation. Sam's 90, verse 1, if you take Sam's 90, verse 1, you will find Sam's 90, verse 1.
Lord, you have been a dwelling place.
Lord, you have been a dwelling place. Throughout all generation! It is a God of generation. Father to son to son to daughter to generation. Some of you are so worried about your children. Why are you worried? Give the, they give the children to God! Because our God is a God of generation. If He can take care of you, He can look after your children better than you can. You seem to be worried so much about your children, I don't know why you're so worried. My children, I have never bothered about it. I had a friend in Trishul who will go with his daughters for tuition class, stand everywhere. And my children will be catching some auto or bus, I don't know where they are going. They will go and come. Now also, I don't know what all they are doing, they are somewhere in the world. If they need help, then they will call me. Please give them freedom. Don't go, don't try to be the savior of your children. Jesus has already died for them. Release them into the kingdom of God. Believe that the same God who can protect you can protect your children. Let not the devil steal your joy and peace of mind. Every time you're worried, you want to be happy. You want to say the Anivasha, you want to jump and dance, but nothing is happening, you are so tired. By the time you've come to the church, you want to sleep. By the time you open your Bible, everything is over. God wants you to do a cleaning of your well. Let me come to the subject back. Genesis chapter 20, 21, verse 25 and 30. It's a very big subject, we've only started. So today pastors told me, we can go Saturday week and so after 12 o'clock, no problem. Genesis 21, verse 25 and, quickly, quickly.
And the two men made a treaty. Abraham set apart seven sheep lambs from the flock.
25 says about a well. Abraham, because of the? Yes. Abraham always had a well of water for his servants and the animals. Verse 30.
Accept these seven lambs from my hand, as a witness, that I dug this well.
Yes, and he was very particular about keeping the wells he dug. The effort of digging the well was very important. Now I'm coming to the fact that Jesus met the Samaritan lady at Jacob's well. So from Abraham to Isaac to Jacob to Jesus, that well had importance. So when you dig a well, you name your wells. Hallelujah! This is the first time I am coming to Atlantia, Georgia. I am digging some wells in the name of Jesus and this will be stained forever! I believe in doing something which God wants to do. And when God does something, it is permanent. It is not temporary, it is not managing something, crisis management. We don't have crisis management, we make escape code forever! Hallelujah! Not short-term adjustment. Somehow managed to pass exam, somehow lived, somehow struggled. Jesus did not say, "I have come that you may have and somehow live." He said, "I have come that you may have life and life in abundance." Here we are getting up in the morning and saying, "Oh, one more day." Where is abundance? Fed up of life, no joy, no peace. Your work, you had it, your family, you had it. Always gripping, always rumbling. We need to have an abundant joy and peace and love overflowing in our life. So Abraham had the habit of digging wells. So today, the first thing is start learning to dig wells. Secondly, Genesis twenty six, verse eighteen, which we read just now, we will go back to Genesis twenty six, verse eighteen. Isaac had a habit of what? Reopening the wells and then. And. Yes.
After Abraham died.
Yes.
And he gave them the same name as his father.
He had a habit of calling the names for his wells. Hallelujah. Hallelujah. Hagar had a well, she called it Bel Raha Irohi. I have seen the one who has seen me. A source of sustenance, a source of joy, a source of deliverance, a source of transformation, name it. You may have had it in your hospital bed, you may not have it in your bedroom, but name it. And claim it and declare it and establish it as a recognition for the kingdom of God. If you are crossing Jordan, never forget to take the stones from there because they are going to be memorials for the kingdom of God. I am talking about serious business in the kingdom of God. I am talking about life changing, transforming experiences. Where you dig wells and you make a name for it. Hallelujah. You know the story of Jacob who ran away from the house? If our Jacob was running away with the permission of the mother, mother would have sent some servants also with him, right? Don't go alone, very difficult, take very big forest, so take two servants. They are lots of servants. Did Jacob have any servants going? Did Jacob have any daycare? Daycare? Who cares? God cares, now daycare's, God doesn't care. Stop daycare and God care. All wrong things are happening in the world, you are shifting your cares to somebody else, transfer your cares and problems to God. God will care for you. Think of the olden days that nobody had any daycare and the children go better than now. Now people are getting backed up by nineties, too many daycares. Leave it to God and make sure that God is in control. And here is Jacob going lonely, alone in a forest at night. Can you think of your Jacob at night in a forest alone with serpents and wild animals? You won't have sleep of peace of mind. And Isaac was sleeping. Abraham didn't have any problem with Isaac. Because these are children of promises, nothing will happen. You and I are the children of promises, no devil has a right to your life. No, nothing can destroy you without the knowledge of the kingdom of God. Heaven is your protector. How easily we get so worried about small things. Because Jacob was sent alone, he could have an experience of Bethel in the midnight. Because we don't send our children alone, they have the security of our home, but no Bethel. They need to have the interaction of God personally in their life. They need to meet with their savior. They need to see a God who will come down and rescue them from fire. Stop acting like a rescue scheme for your children. Give it to God that he will do it for you. You stay back and pray for them. You stay back and look at Jesus and say, Lord, take care of my children. They are your business and you are going to take care. And here is Jacob who got his father's well, which was dug by Abraham, handed over to Isaac, now who got it? Jacob. Isaac and Jacob, Isaac named it. Now let's go forward a little more. God has a habit of. Us having fountain in our life. That is why at the Jacob's well, Samaritan woman asked, and what did Jesus say? If you believe, you will have the fountains of living water coming from your belly. So you and I believe, we get the fountain. Exodus chapter fifteen, verse twenty seven, you find there are twelve wells of water and seventy palms at Elie. Elie is a place in the journey of Christian life, which came after a place of sorrow called Mara. So what comes after Mara? Elie, so if you are having Mara tonight, what does it mean? You are having an Elie waiting for you. Yes, I know doctor, I have been praying for this Elie for a long time, but I am still stuck in the Mara. God is going to make your Mara sweet and move you to the Elie, where you have the springs of living water. Hallelujah, my promise for this year, I want to share with church, it's a secret promise. If anyone want to claim it, you tell train it. It's Deuteronomy six, chapter eleven, it's been the promise that I have been eating in two thousand eighteen and I am enjoying it. Deuteronomy six, eleven. Yes. The houses where I have been staying in two thousand eighteen is full of good things which I have never filled. I had nuts, fruits, chocolates, all kinds of drinks, where all the houses where I am never filling. Last three months I have been staying in different houses which I have not done anything. This is the promise what gave, God gave me. Next verse. God is also going to give you some wells which you have never dug before. Isn't that interesting? Without your hard work, God is going to transfer the care of certain wells, which you and I need to take care. Where the living water is going to flow in the city. Abandoned wells are going to be transferred in your hands because God is not looking for a caretaker. For the prayer group, caretaker for some things. Am I speaking some promises? Am I saying something to somebody? I never knew I am speaking promises, I know in the spirit I am speaking some promises. Some prophecy is denied, God is going to hand over certain things which are very big souls. Which you have not done and you have never made an effort for. Next verse, yes, quickly, let's go fast. Imagine having vineyards and all of it, all of trees which you have never planted. And thou shall eat full. Receive this promise and experience the plenty of God's house. Let's go quickly forward, let me tell you, the source of joy is Jesus. The source of peace is Jesus. What is the kingdom of God? Righteousness, peace and the joy of the Holy Ghost. Why you don't have the joy? Because you don't have the Holy Ghost. Holy Ghost comes with joy. So we know people who have got Holy Ghost. I remember my sister was asking her son, Jeremy, Jeremy, do you know one thing? And we are waiting in a park, you must marry a girl who is filled with the Holy Spirit. He said, huh. And I am eavesdropping from behind to hear what she is talking to her son. And she says, she asked, Jeremy, do you know how to find out a girl with the Holy Spirit? He just laughed and said, haha, and I thought, what is he going to say? Says, Mama, how can you hide a Holy Spirit? If somebody has Holy Spirit, everybody will know. You don't have to go looking for something. If a girl is filled with the Holy Spirit, everybody in the city will know, everybody in the family will know. Holy Spirit and the joy of the Holy Spirit can never be healed. I want the church to be filled with the Holy Spirit. I want people to prophesy in every view. I want the revelation coming into the children's heart. Not an ordinary church. But experiencing the fountain of heaven. Experiencing the joy and peace that never can be stolen away. How many of you are excited and ready? God is preparing something great in your life. Hallelujah, hallelujah. I am excited because God has brought me here for a special reason. Hallelujah. Let's go forward, Second Kings, chapter three, verse nineteen to twenty five. It just means that when the enemy attacks you, you can go back and read. Uh, let's go forward quickly because I have little time. Isaiah, chapter twelve, verse three, I'm going quickly ahead with my message, Isaiah twelve, verse three. So one well is called a well of salvation. And you should keep drawing every day from this well. Jesus saved me from my sin. You will hear in every testimony of mine, I will say, I was a hydrocephalic baby healed by Jesus. Because I am drawing from the joy of my salvation. Hallelujah, let me tell you a second part of my testimony. In eight standard, while I was going behind a cycle of my friend, I fell off, my left leg hit a rock and I started limping. I thought it will be alright in a day, I shook my leg and went off. But the pain started increasing and the limping started increasing. My parents noted, noticed, they said, what happened? They took me to an orthopedic surgeon, he said, it is rheumatic fever. Started treatment, no improvement, three weeks passed, it is getting worse. Then somebody said, another doctor, they consulted, they said, it's TV or the bone. So rheumatic fever medicine, TV medicine. Don't ever believe or trust doctors or medicine. I am a doctor by myself, I prescribe medicines, I operate, but I can tell you, trust in God. Medicines cannot heal you, only God can heal you. If medicines could heal all the patients with diabetes, with medicines should be completely without diabetes. And all should have same reaction. It doesn't happen that way. So if I told you are taking any medicine, say stotram and take it so that it will have some effect on your body, say praise the Lord and eat. Hallelujah. And when things were going bad, I couldn't walk anymore. Then I started limping and I went to write my final year eight standard examination and going into my class. My best friends at the back sitting and laughing and one fellow, I still remember my teacher's son, he shouted and said, there comes the lame Kovur. Till then I was the best Kovur, I was their friend, I used to play cup of tea, football, all kinds of things, hi Kovur, how are you? But when you start limping, they look at you differently. When you are in trouble, people will criticize you. When you are going through fire, people will laugh at you. When you fall down, there will be nobody to cry with you. But I am talking about a God who is able to take you out of the fire, lift you up from where you have fallen, transform you from any situation. Whatever your sickness, whatever your problem be, he is going to give you the joy of the salvation back. The joy that you have lost, which you experienced on the birthday of your salvation. God wants to give it back to you. You are neither lukewarm, neither hot nor cold, you are lukewarm, I will spew you out of my mouth. God wants you to be hot in the kingdom of God. How many of you are hot in the kingdom of God? You get my language? Hot in the kingdom of God, some people are hot outside. I'm not talking about hot inside the world, hot in the kingdom of God. I'm not looking for warm Christians, God is looking for hot Christians. Boiling hot for the kingdom of God. Hallelujah. Finally, I was bedridden, my uncle, Dr. Vorkis Chaco came from Manipal and diagnosed it as a rare disease, as Adalasen Coxavara. Took me to Manipal and put three nails, it is not the surgery that made me walk, it is Jesus who made me walk. I was on wheelchair for many months, I was bedridden, I walked on couches for one year. But through it all, my God was with me. If God heals a hydrocephalic baby George Kovur, he is not going to leave him as a lame child. He is able to make him complete, he will never do a work half undone. Why are you struggling with the problem right now because he is able to solve it? Hand it over to him. All you need to do is get back the joy of your salvation. Let me go forward, let's come to Genesis, uh, chapter twenty four, verse forty three. Here we find Rebecca at the well, the virgin at the well. So we know God gives you a virgin at the well. So the well is very important, verse sixty two, well of the living one, can you read verse forty three, Genesis forty three or twenty four, forty three?
Behold, I stand by the well of water.
Yes.
And it shall come to pass that when the virgin comes forth to draw water.
Yes.
I said to her, give me a praise.
Eliasser looking for a virgin for his master's son. Master, where does he go? To the well, where does Jesus stand? At the well, so well has more significance than you can ever have in the kingdom. And if you don't have a well, you are missing many things in your life. You need to have a well where your source of goodness is going to come. Here is a virgin at the well, verse sixty two, verse sixty two. Yes. And, yes. So Isaac, where did he stay? The way of the well. Lahai rohi, that is where Isaac stayed. Isaac lived there, isn't that interesting that he stayed there? Bel Raha Irohi, verse twenty five, uh, chapter twenty five, verse eleven.
And it came to pass after the death of Abraham.
Yes.
That God blessed his son Isaac.
Yes.
And Isaac dwelled by the well, Nahai rohi.
Bel Raha Irohi, so he remained close to a source of strength and energy. Hallelujah, hallelujah. Make sure that you are in a lively church. Never drive behind a parked vehicle. Imagine driving behind a parked vehicle, the main person leading you is parked already, but you are doing. But you've seen the children doing this. Ten years later, I come and see you, you will be in the same position spiritually. Because you are driving behind a parked vehicle. Don't ever make this mistake. Make sure that you are moving in the kingdom of God, it is a race. We are running a race, all of us are moving, all of us are growing, all of us are changing from glory to glory. All of us are there to receive the power from above, all of us are in a transforming process. Hallelujah. Now is the point, I am coming to the main proportion, last part of my message, I will quickly come to the last part. So Isaac was living near that well, Genesis chapter twenty six, verse twenty. Genesis chapter twenty six, verse twenty. Yes.
When he married Rebecca.
Yeah.
Daughter of Betul, the Armenian from Tadanaram, the sister of Labad, the Armenian.
Genesis chapter twenty six, verse twenty.
And the husband of Gerard.
Yeah.
Strive with Isaac heard men.
Yes.
Saying the water is ours and he called the name of the well, Isaac.
There are contentions for well, enemy will fight for your well. Do you realize that enemy fights for your well? Who has the eye on your well? The enemy has the eye on your well. So whenever you have a well, he is going to have an eye on your well. But what did Isaac do? He didn't stay in the land of contention, whenever the enemy fought, he handed over the well. Because he had the good habit of digging new wells. Some of us don't have the habit of digging new wells, so we hold on to the. Well we have. Praise the Lord. When we started church in Rishu many years ago, many, many years ago, I think twenty five years ago. When the first few families left the church, when I travel somewhere and I come back, they joined some other church nearby, I was very upset. So I told my father, with so much of prayer, so much of thing, these people came in, now they are attending some other church. I am planning to go, my parents knew them very well, he said, I am planning to go after them and bring them back. My father said, don't ever bother, let them go, start digging new wells. Hallelujah, the first principle I learned twenty five years, that if anybody is leaving your church and going to some other place. You are getting a free seat for a new person to be saved in the name of Jesus. Never run after somebody who is going, send, give him, give farewell and go to party and send him away. Maybe you go and start a new church, maybe you start a new ministry, maybe God is taking to be a new leadership. Don't own, don't possess, don't hold, set them free, you start digging new wells. Hallelujah, I hope you are all with me. God is speaking to someone, I don't know who that is, but definitely God is speaking tonight. Let's have we go forward a little bit and read verse twenty one. Yes. Again, the second well fights. Start one congregation fight, next one congregation fight, what do you do, what do you do with them? Next well. Let's go forward, what happened?
He called the name of Vegetna.
Yes.
And he removed from them.
Yes.
And dug another well.
Yes.
For that they strove not.
Now he came to a place, finally he was at peace. Wow, that is the message and that well is called Rehoboth, the broad place. Now you having struggling and striving and trying to know whether this is the job that I need to stay, lot of strife, leave the job. Don't try to hold on and think, oh, will I get a new one? What will happen to me if I stay without a job? I remember after my MS, I stayed one year without working anywhere. I went around preaching, trying to find out whether neurosurgery is the right which I need to do. My auntie who is a doctor said, you will forget everything. Woo, God has a place, he will prepare for you, maybe you need to rest sometime and sit and pray. Don't hold on to. Don't hold on to something which is having a strife, leave it. Release it, a relationship where you are struggling, release it. If it is yours and God ordained, it will come into your hand. Never try to struggle and fight for things because God has something very clear. And the message is the message of Rehoboth. When God, you start cleaning your well, when you start digging new wells, God will bring you to a place, the place is called Rehoboth. And what is the meaning of Rehoboth? God has made plenty of room. Are you squeezed in now? There is a special offer for this flight tonight, more legroom for you. How many of you are ready for a more legroom? You have been flying in the cruise with all tightness and cramming, every time running from there to here, not knowing what to do. Special offer for tonight is more legroom for you. More place to sit and relax, relax with your children. I was working in Westport Hospital, very busy, twenty-four seven, sixty OPDs, ten fifteen surgeries, lot of admissions, big problem. My children were growing up and they needed me. I went and resigned my job. They said, you are a fool. How can you resign a highly paid job in a good institution? I said, I need to spend more time with my children because I will never get back that age again. The next time when they needed me more, I resigned again the next job and went to a lighter job. Don't hold on to things which prevent you from going for Sunday service because the promotion that devil has given you, every promotion is not from heaven. The promotion that devil has given you to stop you from worshiping him, chuck it away! Come to the broad place called Rehoboth. I heard that testimony when I came here from pastor. How wonderful Rehoboth is. When you are released out of a job, God has a special plan for you. While I was preaching into Vienna, I went to a church there. Sunday service of Punjabi new young Christian got up and gave his testimony. It just shook my heart. You know what his testimony was? He got up and said, I resigned my job today. He is a chauki dar, a security in a big factory with a good job. He said, I asked the manager whether I can go for worship on Sunday. He said, no, your duty is on Sunday. I told the manager, I don't want a duty which calls me to come here on Sunday. I need to worship Jesus. A young Punjabi Christian was able to throw away the job. I am telling you, that job was the only source of income for his family, the only source he depended on. But he threw it in the name of Jesus! Don't hold on to things which doesn't belong to you. God will give you a better thing. Believe that there is a big room, big thing for you, a broad place. Hallelujah! My ways are not your ways. My thoughts are not your thoughts. As heaven is far away from the earth, as high are his thoughts for you. His plans for your life is much greater than you can ever imagine. All you need to do is clean your wells, dig new wells, stay near the source of your well. Make sure that you have a living water flowing in you. Make sure that you have a constant relationship with the power of God. Make sure that you are hearing God's voice very clearly. Teach the children from young age to learn to listen to God's voice. Hallelujah! I'm going to come to the close, last part of it. I will tell you one more testimony. See, my daughter, second, the first daughter, Abigail, who is married in Florida, I wanted her to do medicine, she got into LDBS in Kerala. But she wanted to go to Ludhiana and she was first ranked in, uh, second ranked in dental college there. And I am sitting there very upset because she has not taken medicine. And she has ten reason why dentistry is better. She said, I am a girl. I will do dentistry. You have been working so hard, struggling so much, I don't want to do that, I have a family, I need to take care so dentistry is better. She kept arguing so many things. I know it is a God's will for me. My children all know, if that is a keyword, if I say, they say it is God's will for us, then I won't argue. So that's their punchline. I know it's God's will for me. I just kept quiet and she kept explaining. And the first ranked person gone in, I am upset, sitting there, wondering what to do with all the certificates in my hand. I got a text message. It is from a man called Gul Kriblari, who was the president of Indian Association of Merchants Association, very high businessman, who brought Benihin first time in India from Bombay. So he just became friends at that time and I had his number. He has never texted me before or after. I don't know where he is, he doesn't know where I am. But I get a text like this, listen very carefully. The text starts like this, God upsets your plans. I said, C C T here also. Everywhere, twenty-four seven, this God is watching. I cannot run from him. Do you know you have a God who doesn't sleep? Who watches over you whether you like it or not? Who sees all the naughty things you are doing? Everything and everywhere, you can't hide from him. C C T, it says, God upsets your plans. I am so upset and it comes, God upset, then I'm serious. And the next line says, to set up his plans. Sometimes God upsets your plans to set up his plans. Say hallelujah! He may take away one well to give you a better well, a better job, a better relationship, a better person. Hallelujah! What a great God we have. Then I became very serious, I am reading the next line. It says, you plan your future by seeing the present, but he plans the present by knowing your future. Have a blessed day. You plan your future by seeing the present, but he plans the present by knowing your future. God is planning something very big for you. There is a Rehoboth waiting for you. Many of your fountains are blocked by the dirt thrown by the devil. Take the, all the dirt out of your life, all the things, all the worries, all the cares, all the questions, all the negativities that you have in your heart, take it out! Treat it! Let the peace of God flood your heart. Let the joy of the Holy Spirit flood your heart. Let God take control of your life. It is Jesus and Jesus and Jesus alone. That is what we sang today. He is the center of my life. How many of you can say that I live for Jesus? Paul said in Philippians, chapter one, verse twenty, for me to live is Christ and to die is gain. If you live for your job, your death is miserable. If you live for your finances, your buildings, your houses, when you die, you are going to leave them behind. If you live for your friends, you are a terrible man because they will leave you sometime. If you live for anything in this world, that is temporary. But if you live for God, your death is a gain. Because you are going to go to a place where you are waiting for. Jesus is coming soon. He is coming with crowns and rewards for every one of you. Let us straighten our accounts in the kingdom of God. Let us straighten our relationship with God. Let's be in business. We are not in the kingdom of God for our business, but for the business of the kingdom of God. He will build the church and nobody will oppose him. We are going to fight this battle with Jesus in our bones. Hallelujah! Hallelujah! God wants to take this church to the next level, widen and broaden the boundaries. Use you mighty for the kingdom of God. All you need to do is dig more wells and have more fountains. Make all the blocked fountains to be open and let your life be a overflowing life. Shall we close our eyes for a word of prayer? God has been speaking to you in different ways, from different portions tonight. He is a wonderful God. He is a loving God. He is an unchanging God. Delight in the Lord and he will give you the desires of your heart. The devil has no right in your life. He is trying to steal your joy, your peace, your happiness. Don't give any chance to him. Flood your heart with the peace of God. The peace that passes understanding, all understanding. Let your mouth be always praising God and not cursing people. Use your mouth to glorify God. Let us stop all the insults and hurls and negativities that we make. But let us be a source of joy and peace. Let, from the bottom of our heart, let the joy of the Holy Spirit flow. God wants you to take you to the next level. He wants to give you eternal inheritance with few wells made for you. Are you ready? Say, Lord, fill me with your Holy Spirit. And I need the anointing of the Holy Spirit. He says, ask of the Father and he will give it to you free. If anybody is desiring to have the filling and anointing of the Holy Spirit, ask of God, he will flood your heart. He will give you the joy of the Holy Spirit. He will give you the peace and power. Ask God. Hallelujah! Hallelujah! He will give you more than you ask, ever ask and think because that is yours. If there is somebody struggling in your mind, thinking whether I should take baptism or not, young and old, children or adults, it doesn't matter what your age is, may the Holy Spirit prompt you to decide to obey God. Don't walk into disobedience but obey the word of God. You don't have to look at the next person. Tomorrow, there is going to be a baptism. So if there is somebody wanting to take baptism, this is an opportunity to decide for them. I'm also giving you an opportunity. If you are backslided in your life and the source of joy has been flooded with mud, create it. Your commitment has been flooded with mud, create it. Your surrender has been flooded with mud, create it. And surrender again into God's hand that he may source you with the everlasting joy, that there will be the living water flowing from your belly for eternity. I know the spirit has been speaking to someone. I know God has been speaking. God is going to give you promises which you have not worked for, wells you have never dug before. Promises and opportunities and places which you have not worked for because that's God's promise for you. How many of us are ready tonight to say, Lord, here am I, just like Samuel? He is going to make you the prophets. He is going to make you the person who is going to bring down fire. The end time ministry, our ministry of fire. Hallelujah! If there is somebody I want to pray for you, I am not looking for just a commitment, but a total surrender. God is looking for someone, an Elijah whom he wants to flood with the power of the Holy Spirit. Where there will be a source flowing, where many people can come and drink the power of God. Is there one who is willing to say, Lord, here I am. I want to clean up all the promises, I want to get back all the power and everything that you have for me. I want a Rehoboth in my life, I want broad place and I will remain in it. I want to pray for that person. If there is somebody who is requiring a prayer, I want to see your right hand. If there is somebody sick and troubled, you can also lift your hands. Or some issues in your life, I can pray for you too. Just lift your hand up. I know many hands are going up, don't look here and there. Children are lifting hands, younger people are lifting your hands. I know God has been speaking to many of you. There are many hands going, many commitments I see. I know God has been holding them. There are some promises that I held back and you have not received it. You just need to say amen and receive it tonight. Amen and receive it because they are waiting. Arsal, your name is there on it. Receive it tonight, there are some promises waiting for it. Hallelujah! All those who lifted your hands, please stand up wherever you are, I see so many of you. I'm going to pray for you. The servants of God also can pray for them. You can stand with me and pray for these people. All those who lifted their hands, please stand wherever you are. Receive the joy, receive the peace. I know many more of you have lifted your hands. Don't be hesitant, just stand wherever you are. Don't look here and there, God is going to bless you. Speak to your Father, continue to speak to your heavenly Father. Loving heavenly Father, we thank you for this church, we thank you for this congregation. We thank you for all those who committed their lives today. Lord, people with sickness, bondage, problem. In the name of Jesus, we declare healing and victory. We pray that the devil has no right in their life. Lord, we pray that the power of the Holy Spirit will fall on them. Bless them, Lord. Bless the congregation, bless those who are standing there for a special need, a fresh anointing and a new touch from you. Lord, if there is any spirit of infirmity holding them back, the pain, the sorrow, the bitterness, the sickness, the troubles they have, be drawn in the name of Jesus. Lord, we declare victory. Thank you, Lord, because you are here and you are listening to each one of us. Lord, this year, that this year, the rest of the month, be a month of joy and worship and praise. Then it will be the people who are going to bless the nation. We give you all glory and praise in Jesus' name we pray. Shall we all stand and sing together? I want to thank all of you for your patient hearing. Go back and meditate on the word and God will continue to speak to you. I want to thank Pastor Thomas Matthew and I want to thank his family, they have been taking care of me. I thank God for the family that we visited yesterday, South Ocean Family. I am looking forward to, I don't know, by tomorrow afternoon, I'll be upset when I leave from here. Anyway, I can tell you, God bless you, God bless you, thank you.